Welcome to the Tuesday, October eighth, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm joined by Vice Chair Commissioner Nafisa Fai and Commissioner Roy Rogers. We have five things on our agenda today. We're going to start with Hartwood Commons. So turn it over to you, Ms. Chen.
Thank you so much, Chair Harrington, Vice Chair Fai and Commissioner Rogers for this opportunity to speak with you. For the record, I'm Jill Chen, Assistant Director of the Department of Housing Services and the Housing Authority of Washington County. Today's discussion is focused on Hartwood Phase Two and the remaining Metro Affordable Housing Bonds. However, the larger policy discussion is about the multi-phased approach to acquisition of hotels and motels for multipurpose use. Example, in this case, initially as this property was purchased as transitional housing and then converted to permanent supportive housing. And now discussion will focus on the associated risk and cost with this strategy. This is a conversation that will help the Department of Housing Services as it seeks more transitional housing to expand the spectrum of options for our homeless constituents. With me today is Lisa Varin, our newly mentored Real Estate Division Manager, as well as Molly Rogers, the Executive Director. Next slide, please. A quick update about the agenda for the Aloha Inn or the Hartwood Project. We're just going to briefly talk about the background information, the Phase One acquisition and conversion, then talk about the Phase Two livability and now building life extension, the project financing sources, our next phase two, as well as some of our lessons learned and our due diligence and some next steps. Terms of project background, the Aloha Inn was a fifty-four unit hotel on one point one to five acres located in the Aloha neighborhood at one hundred and ninety-eighth Avenue in unincorporated Washington County. It was built in nineteen eighty-five and it was purchased in January twenty twenty-one. This was part and in alignment with the county's implementation, local implementation strategy for Metro Affordable Housing Bonds with the goal to produce a hundred PSH units out of the county's total eight hundred and fourteen units. The current status, it was originally purchased and then for the first couple of years, it was used as temporary and transitional housing. It is currently used and converted as permanent affordable housing for supportive, our, what we call Population A, permanent residential housing, supportive housing, high acuity. With the lease up started about a year and a half ago, it is about ninety-eight percent occupancy. Our service partners are CIPA and Sequoia, and these are really high needs population. Our capital needs assessment was conducted just a couple, finished just a couple of months ago, and it indicated a significant additional work is needed to increase the livability and building life. Phase One was focused on the acquisition and then converting it to residential units. The building acquisition represented the bulk of a cost, over fifty percent. And additional construction was related to converting hotel rooms to apartment studios with kitchenettes, conforming up to residential code, namely fire suppression sprinklers and the like, addressing immediate plumbing needs and partially replacing bathtubs, and a partial renovation of the office space to accommodate supportive services. The total cost of Phase One was slightly over ten million at a cost of about a hundred and eighty-six thousand per unit. With this, I'll turn it over to my colleague Lisa Varin to talk about our upcoming work.
Purpose of the Phase Two renovation is to address livability and to extend the building life by upgrading or replacing building systems that were not covered in the initial conversion. The scope of work includes roof and window replacement, plumbing re-pipe, addressing interior and exterior ADA requirements, installing HVAC in common areas such as the hallways, landscaping and redesigning common areas, including the entrance lounge, communal kitchen, resident services and property management offices and meeting rooms for safety and usability. The total development cost is anticipated to be approximately three point five million, which is just over sixty-four thousand dollars per unit. Here are some pictures of the existing conditions and a few of the big ticket items in the Phase Two development budget. The original roof is at the end of its useful life and patchwork repairs are no longer a cost-effective approach. The Phase Two scope includes replacing the roof. Sheathing is needed, they need to pull it up to know. Perimeter gutters and downspouts. The windows and stucco are also original. New windows and exterior stucco replacement will address ongoing water intrusions and improve the building energy performance, including adding flashing, which was not originally in the building design. The original plumbing is over forty years old, corroded in places and failing in others. Placing the plumbing will improve system function and prevent costly maintenance when problems occur.
Will all the windows be replaced?
Okay, yeah, thank you.
This slide lists the due diligence reports conducted for Hartwood Commons, which are fairly standard for residential project. In August, HOC commissioned a capital needs assessment which identified the Phase Two scope of work and budget.
But back on that slide, sorry, it says due diligence and lessons learned. So is the lesson, once a rehab, always a rehab? Because that's why I was, I could see, okay, there was due diligence and additional assessment done, where's the lesson?
That is part of the lesson, is once a rehab, always rehab. And also even as we go into new construction, we know that buildings, say after about thirty years or so, they will need another major rehab.
Okay.
This one was built in nineteen eighty-five, so it's probably long overdue. There was some we have done prior to our purchase and that was done, just take a look at my notes, that was done in twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen, but it did not include a number of these items. Also, some of the things we have learned is as we go into a lot of, we're not going into a lot, but we have a few of these now. Looking at the possibility of future redevelopment and what are the costs and continued use? And that is really more the last two items of code analysis, flood plains, land use considerations. Because of course, when we start, you can call it redeveloping, we have to meet up to his current code.
Yep.
And that requires a lot more, you can call it forward thinking than just immediate use. And what are we going to do with immediate use?
Thank you, I know, it's clear to me now, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Sure.
So on this slide, we're talking about the project funding sources. The total development budget for both Phase One and Phase Two is projected at thirteen point five million dollars. And remember, about five to six million of that was acquisition and approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit. The cost is less than the Metro Affordable Housing Bond averages for permanent supportive housing projects. So we do kind of have some data to look back on, which averaged three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-six thousand per unit. Acquisition rehab for PSH is a time and cost-effective approach that is often multi-phased. So the way our financing systems work is we often get the money to purchase the building and do a very small rehab. Then we get more money to do the rehab, but it's not always necessarily enough. As you all may know, it's not until you open up the building that you know what all the problems and needs are. Project funding sources included the Metro Affordable Housing Bond, OMEP, Washington County Housing Production Opportunity Fund and an owner's contribution.
ORMep?
That's the Oregon, gosh, I want to say it's Energy Trustee Fund, but it's, it's to do with certain energy improvements.
Thank you.
So this is our schedule for Phase Two, which anticipates that from October to December of this year, HOC will secure this board's recommendation to Metro, Metro approvals, finalize the scope of work and develop the design-build RFP. The first half of twenty twenty-five will involve selecting the design-build team, preparing permit drawings and applications with construction starting mid-year and lasting twelve months. The next steps for Phase Two renovations include the board's recommendation to Metro for Amendment Number Two to final approval. We'll be coming back to you next week. The Metro review and approval process and HOC issuing an RFP for design-build services. That concludes our presentation. We are happy to answer any questions you may have regarding Hartwood Commons Phase Two renovations.
First, do you have any questions?
I do, Chair Harrington.
Yes.
Good morning and thank you for that great presentation. I have, I just want to just level set my own understanding of what the ask is today and where this project is going. So if you could go to slide number, just right after the project background. Think it's slide five. Yeah, that.
That one, Phase One acquisition, yeah.
Yeah, this one. So this is, Phase One is complete?
Yes.
Phase One is complete?
Before.
Four. And it costs, Phase One was about ten million?
Yes.
Now, Phase Two, we're going to need three million to do everything you're asking for.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then if you could go to Phase Two, current building system condition. Has any of these issues been documented in the first sort of assessment building?
There was some documentation about the potential for the roof, but at that time, we did not embark on it. And part of it was the need to immediately move people in and then stabilize that population. And yet the immediate needs, which is in that list of getting it ready for residential housing. And we'll be blunt, part of the reason we're here today is that we have the three and a half million from Metro Affordable Housing Bonds. If that was not available, we probably wouldn't be able to be here. The three and a half we looked at was useful for this particular purpose because we would not be able to figure out how to do the Phase Two from any other sources.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so if you look here at the Phase One scope, you can see that the focus was on life and safety, so the fire suppression system, and then getting the units themselves ready and addressing immediate plumbing issues. And I do believe there was some immediate roofing issues, but there was not enough of a budget to do the full building systems, which in a rehab, when you do purchase a building, you do want to try to do that. So as you can see, Scope Two is now really focusing on those building systems so that we'll have a longer-lasting building.
There were some issues also that we did not realize, and that had more to do with a water intrusion and the issues around windows and the fact that water was seeping in. And we couldn't really see that until we actually owned it, operated it, and saw what was happening inside the building.
And I think at one point, there was a flooding that happened.
Yes, there was.
Thank you for that explanation. And then the slide about the due diligence process. Are the, the stuff that has the check mark, all those are things that you're going to conduct? Are there some that's already been done or are they all done? It looks like they're all done, but I think you're going to do some of them.
They're all done, actually.
All done?
Mm-hmm. And they're all what we use to put together both the Phase One and Phase Two scopes.
And of all these reports, all these processes show that it will take about three million dollars to fix any of the problems that these reports showed?
It's at least three and a half million.
Three and a half million, yeah.
The issue with rehabs is once you open things up, you're never really quite sure what you're going to get behind the walls. So we do have a healthy contingency, but it may be more than that. And we just frankly don't know, especially about things like water intrusion issues. And when we open up the roof, we've seen what the roof has, but there may be, we are therefore building up that healthy contingency because we have are very difficult to estimate. We're trying to make sure that it's within that three and a half million dollar budget. And we should mention that list of due diligence process. It's also partly of the lessons learned that the importance of making sure all of those due diligence items are done as we go into the acquisition for any of our, you can call it, potential new hotel motels.
Okay. And are any of these, I'm just trying to get a, like, how do we go in eyes wide open kind of a mentality here so that there isn't another missed opportunities? And then we come back a few years later, a couple of years later and say, oh, there's more of these problems? So I'll, any of these reports public information or are these?
We are happy to share them with you. They're, and they are, I think for acquisition, those will not be public because it's a real estate transaction related. But once we have purchased them, those would be available.
But let me also respond. Every single one of these, we have gone in with eyes wide open, but you cannot open walls until after you own a property. So there's only so much due diligence you can do in acquiring a property. It's only after ownership that you have access to the full property and you can see its behavior over time. The same exists with a newly constructed property. So that's why usually with a newly constructed property, there's like a warranty period where the builder has to come in and fix any things that have gone awry. So all of this work, all of these acquisitions, all of the building management has been done with eyes wide open.
Yeah, I'll also add that, you know, the first phase did have budget constraints, but also we are in an environment of escalating costs from a construction perspective for materials and for, you know, wages. And so that occurs during the course of construction as well as this experience of discovery and having to prioritize what you can and can't do while you're actually out there building.
And I have two more last, you know, questions. The slide about the funding, just again, just checking my own understanding. Phase Two is complete, you don't, you're not requesting any funding of that. We're just at the Phase Two is what the request is, that three point five, okay. And then the final question I have is actually the first slide around the background. I've heard some concerns from both residents, people who relate to those residents and outside partners that their service providers aren't fully staffed. Is there a requirement for those service providers to be fully staffed? And I understand workforce issues exist, but what's the accountability to address the workforce, for them to address their own workforce issues?
Could I ask that you take that question offline? Because it does not pertain to the capital handling of this property, but rather the operation of the program, the SHS program. And we have two other commissioners that need to get their questions in by nine thirty. So I'm trying to manage for time.
I understand that, Chair, but I think you put in the project background slide, you have service providers and there are concerns to address. So I think if you, when you come back for the record and for the public viewing, it's beneficial to, this isn't information for me, this is a concern that exists within the community. So I think it's worthy of you figuring out next time, however you can do it, to, rather than saying, take it off, and this isn't my question, this is a concern that comes from the community, so. I don't want to put you in awkward space, we'll move on today.
Thank you, Commissioner.
But I think it's important that, Chair Harrington, you consider next time.
As Presiding Officer, we're going to move on to questions from the remaining two commissioners. Commissioner Rogers?
A couple of, a couple of things. One, this is no brainer, I mean, we've already got into the property and so the rehab to me makes a lot of sense. Couple of comments. On slide seven, it's just a personal thing, not necessarily. Where it says, once a rehab, always a rehab, I react to that a little oddly because I think that rehabs are not bad, I really don't. And then on slide eight, the cost per unit. Naturally, it's going to be a little bit less because these are studios. So I, I think it's important that we, when we start comparing averages, you know, those are averages for two-bedroom, one-bath oftentimes, different configuration, different floor plan. So it, it kind of leads somebody to believe that, gee, we're comparing apples to apples and we're really not. So now that, move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. We will be able to get, we'll go back and look at the Metro data again and see about the studio units. Because I agree with you that the three eighty-seven per unit is, was the blend of all of the Metro Affordable Housing projects. We can strip out those that are only the smaller one-bedroom or in studios and give you an update.
It's the only data that Metro has made available through the program. So the question I have is like with Commissioner Rogers' comment, I think rehabs are a good avenue as part of the overall toolset to work on. With, if Metro will approve the use of these funds, and that's the only source we have, as you've identified for the Phase Two work, do you believe that this, the Phase Two rehab will extend the life use of this building for up to that thirty-year period that you alluded to?
Certainly for the building systems themselves. There is wear and tear from tenants in the buildings and unit turnover. But certainly for the building systems themselves.
Yeah, great.
And for those continued wear and tear, our goal is to use the operating income from the building to maintain that.
Yep, yep. As with all affordable housing units. Yep, and public housing units as well. Okay, great. Are commissioners ready to move forward, given the questions that were on next steps? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next topic, appointment to the Rainbow Lane Special Road District. Welcome, Mr. Watkins and Ms. Gray, it's good to see you.
Thank you, it's good to see you as well.
And this is one of those very limited, very special service districts.
Exactly, this is Special Road District for Rainbow Lane and Patricia Lane, two rural locals in Commissioner Rogers' district. They formed a board to manage the maintenance and funding for their road. They have a three-member board, which rotates on an annual basis. And the incumbent, this year's, this year's rotating member is the, is incumbent and just wants to be reappointed.
There's okay with that?
Sure.
Yep, alrighty, we'll have a nice. That was quick.
Pretty lengthy meeting.
Okay, we'll grill the next group. Rainbow Lane's pretty simple.
Not much to.
Okay, Public Transportation Improvement Plan priorities. Can we get any more peas in there?
You wanted more, we could find some.
Hello, Paul Diame Valentine. Hello, Patrick Stephen. There's a lot of peas.
Indeed.
Today's meeting brought to you by the letter P.
That's right.
Well, good morning, commissioners. Diame is basically going to just walk us through the process of evaluating priorities for our Public Transportation Improvement Funds. That's our allocation from the statewide Transportation Improvement Fund. It's a little complicated, so Diame is going to walk us through all of that. And then we're just going to be back in December, I think, seeking your board's approval of our transit development plan for Washington County. With that, I'll turn it over to Diame.
Great, thank you. And you guys were so fast on the earlier item that our, one of our participants has not arrived yet, so hopefully he shows up. But we did want to say.
Sir Whitman?
Yes.
Oh, from Ride Connection?
Yes.
We all know.
You know Ride.
We all know him and we know of Ride Connection, so it's great.
All right. So the purpose this morning, as Stephen mentioned, is really just to share the recommendations for the upcoming biennium, the Transit Improvements for fiscal years twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven, and seek your support to advance those forward to TRIMET, to include in the Public Transportation Improvement Plan, and then share an exciting new launch of services that will start here shortly in the Bethany-Sudermil area. There's another piece, more piece for you, presentation overview. So just a quick recap of what the statewide Transportation Improvement Fund is and all the good work that our Transit Advisory Committee did this year. And again, share that preview. And these are just some questions that we will revisit at the end of the presentation, just seeking your support to advance those recommendations forward and some process. So just a quick reminder of what the statewide Transportation Improvement Fund is. This was the dedicated funding source established out of the HB twenty seventeen transportation package, which was a tenth of one percent employee payroll tax. And the focus of the funds was specifically stated to improve and maintain transit service, specifically focused on communities of lower-income households and students were specifically identified. And really the goal is to improve transit reach, make it more comfortable, reliable, frequent, all of the things that we know that transit should be serving for our community members. And back in twenty twenty, your board appointed a ten-member Transit Advisory Committee. Board members were appointed to four-year terms. So that's another item that will be coming back to you to reappoint members to that committee later in twenty twenty-five. But their charge is to provide recommendations on public transportation improvement projects funded through the STIF program. And the area, the map here illustrates kind of the areas of priority, which is really anything outside of the TRIMET Service District, we receive a direct allocation of funds. And then there are, inside TRIMET Service District, there are certain community and job connector shuttles that are also funded through this program that they advise on as well. Lot of information on here. This is intended to reflect a somewhat convoluted and not at all confusing process. So at the local level, we produce a transit development plan that is a two-to-five-year plan that identifies priority improvements, identifies what those. That is a two to five year plan that identifies priority improvements, identifies what those needs are, and assessment of our community needs and, and reflects those. And, uh, out of that come priority transit improvement projects to be funded in the next biennium, which gets advanced to TRIMET. They are considered the, what's called a qualified entity for our region. And out of that, they, uh, consolidate the three county priorities into what's called the Public Transportation Improvement Plan. That gets advanced to ODOT and ultimately approved by the Oregon Transportation Commission. And then those funds then circulate, uh, once that everything is approved, back to TRIMET and ultimately back to Washington County to deliver those services.
Does, uh, SMART get their funding straight from TRIMET or did they get it from Washington County?
So they, they actually get it through TRIMET. Yeah, TRIMET is the, the qualified entity to receive the funds and then distribute the funds. Uh, and. John's not here yet, but, uh, as, as you know, all the good work that, uh, Ride Connection does in our community to, to provide services to our community members. Uh, we really benefit and, and leverage their kind of deep connections with the community. Uh, as you know, we contracted with them back in twenty eighteen through a competitive process. And, uh, again, it really, the program and the funds that Washington County provides them really leverages and builds upon all the, the good work that they're doing. So I wanted to provide just a quick overview and kind of the process that we went through to identify those priorities and, and shared, uh, this with our advisory committee members. So this was an effort to solicit input on the priority projects and, uh, transit improvements to be funded. We did a robust, uh, on, online survey as well as in-person engagement through the month of August. We had staff members at numerous tabling events geographically distributed throughout the county, um, as, as best we could. Unfortunately, the response rate wasn't as robust as we would have hoped, but, uh, this really builds on a lot of the work that we've done recently and. With the statewide transit, uh, study as well as other efforts, so. We feel like we had a, a pretty good understanding of kind of what the community interests were, this really. This is just intended to kind of reflect the, the responses, the kind of top priorities. This aligns with a lot of the feedback that we've heard over the last couple of years, so. Good to get that, uh, reiterated. And, you know, again, kind of the interest from the community members, they just want to have the. The transit trip as comfortable, as reliable, as frequent, and getting them to where they want to go. So, no, no surprises. This chart is intended to, so out of the, the program has a number of projects that are fun, funded. This chart illustrates that all, the majority, vast majority, ninety-four percent of the funds go to delivering, uh, improvements. Actual operations, services for our community members. With the other elements being, uh, focused on in, improving that, the, the transit trip as well as, uh, some planning and administration to, um, operate the program. So I'll walk through, I think, John's not here yet, so I'll walk through, uh.
Start early, two minutes after.
I guess so.
Start of your presentation.
Uh, some more peas here for project details, uh, in terms of what will actually be funded. If you're familiar with West Link, it's the service that, uh, connects Forest Grove, Banks, North Plains and Hillsborough. Community Connector, we're maintaining existing levels, uh, of service of six round trips per weekday. Rural Demand Response, this builds upon, uh, the Demand Response Program that Ride Connection provides to community members for, uh, older adults and people with disabilities. The funds that we're able to provide them, provide that same level of service, door-to-door service for community members or the general community, so anybody can take advantage of that. And then, uh, Local Shuttles, uh, Community Connector, Job Connector, Shuttles inside the TRIMET District, which is actually funded as a, a subset of TRIMET's. Uh, stiff allocation, so this is to maintain and, uh. Deliver those shuttles in Forest Grove, Tuolatin, North Hillsborough, uh, a new shuttle that recently launched in King City. And then the, the Bethany Link, the new service, Bethany and Cedar Mill. What we call interregional coordination, this is the opportunity where we can coordinate with our other county providers, there's actually a lot of services that come in and out of Washington County. And so this is, uh, funds that the committee has, uh, allocated to coordinate with them to better improve services to our community members. And take advantage of those services, so one opportunity that we've identified is working with Yamhill County Transit to maintain, uh, services between McMinnville and Hillsborough. Um, so this will, uh, ensure that, you know, for example, people in Gaston can take advantage of that service, we know a lot of students, uh, take advantage of that who live in Forest Grove.
Are these buses, uh, TRIMET equivalent?
Uh, they're actually a little bit.
Like a Ride Connection?
They're, they're a little bit smaller, uh, and I think this actually, this may not be the line thirty-three, it's, it's actually a little bit shorter than this bus. But I think it's probably a, yeah, it's probably a twenty, twenty-five passenger. And then, uh, we need to continue to plan for future biennium, so we continue to do some of that service planning and, and, uh, making sure that our transit development plan is up to date and current. And that's what we will be bringing back to you in December for your action on.
Yeah, if I could ask, uh, what the numbers mean?
Sorry, yeah, that's, uh, that's actually an image from our plan which reflects, uh. We did an assessment of, uh, Community Connector services to identify kind of where, where it would be appropriate. These are intended to kind of fill in the network where there's not fixed route transit. And, uh, so the assessment and the color coding is associated with near-term opportunities and, and longer-term opportunities. So we looked at, you know, for example, the number four is that Bethany service, which is now going to be implemented.
But I'm glad, glad you asked, because when I saw this in the packet, uh, I believe number four is, uh, relative to the Cedar Mill Shuttle. And somewhere amongst all the different LUT communications, I got the impression that the Cedar Mill Shuttle was either being. Reconstituted or welcome. Feel free to come on up and sit by this mic, it's okay Stephen, you could stay there, we have, we have another mic over here. Thank you, we were a little ahead of schedule. It led me to believe that service for the Cedar Mill Shuttle was either already restored. Uh, and performing at a certain level, or it was being enhanced. So, um, what's the status, I can hold the question on what's the status on Cedar Mill Shuttle for later if you want.
Yeah, I, this is actually, it's a new, uh, entirely new service, it's actually. There was, TRIMET was operating, uh, what was called Line Fifty for a number of years.
Yeah.
That had a similar route to what.
Yep.
Uh, Ride Connections' new Bethany Link service will provide. And there's also some overlap with that Cedar Mill Shuttle, which I think has been non-operational for some time, I think.
Okay, well, somewhere I saw that name resurrected, so. Just be aware of that because the Cedar Mill Shuttle and Line Fifty and Bethany do not go together.
Right.
From past performance, so.
It'll be interesting.
Yeah.
I don't know if, John, if you have anything to add to.
For further status.
Yeah.
Date, I'll take it offline this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Slide about that maybe we did it. We do, yeah, we'll have some opportunity to discuss that. So, uh, some other priorities, just in, uh, ma- making sure that we can kind of maintain, uh, so the. We have been doing, uh, we've received a number of grants recently to make stop improvements, which has been something that the community members were really advocating for. Uh, in a lot of our engagement, just lack of awareness, you know, making sure that the, the stop environment is comfortable for our community members, and so. Uh, thanks to those grants, we now have infrastructure in place that we'll need to make sure that we maintain, we also want to make additional enhancements, uh, when, uh, available. And so we're making sure that we're keeping that alive and, and, um, you know, maintaining the system in its state of good repair, also acknowledging. Vehicle replacements are going to be needed as well to ensure that the system can remain viable, so these are all elements of what our, uh, priorities are.
It's all customer experience.
That's right.
Thank you.
And then I think another exciting opportunity is, uh, as part of that customer experience is. Kind of trip planning and, and, uh, you know, potentially more real-time, uh, arrival information for customers, so this is technology investments. Uh, we are seeking a, a competitive grant, uh, to implement this. And then we will have, uh, funds to make sure that it remains operational. So this is just a, uh, summary table of what we anticipate the revenue being for the fiscal year, so we receive. What we call direct that formula funds, so those are the funds that are generated outside the TRIMET District. There is a portion that we split with the South Metro Area, uh, Regional Transit, uh, so we divvy that up, there's a whole process that we go through to, uh. Establish what that distribution allocation, uh, method is, so we anticipate, uh, at this point, we actually account for and have been directed that we assume. Higher than a hundred percent of the forecast, so ODOT produces this forecast, it's. A little convoluted as I mentioned, but, so anyway, we anticipate nearly a million dollars for the biennium for, uh, outside the TRIMET District. The Regional Coordination Program is the TRIMET, uh, allocated funding program that we receive a, a substantial portion to fund those shuttles inside the TRIMET District. That has, uh, we could talk a little bit more about that, uh, we've had some. The, the forecast has come in lower than it, it was initially, we had been having some conversations with TRIMET about, you know, hopefully. Accounting for, uh, additional, you know, increased costs associated with delivering these services. But because of the, the flat forecast, those funds have essentially remained flat, so. Um, and then we will have some funds that we will be carrying forward from this biennium into the next biennium, just due to the, uh, uh, challenge in bringing on some of the new services, so. Those will be available for the next biennium as well. So, uh, the Transit Committee at their final melee, meeting, uh, thank you to Chair Rogers, uh, on that, uh, chairing the committee. Uh, at their September eighteenth, committee recommended the board approve the project list for the upcoming biennium, um, as, as outlined here. So the questions for you, and we're happy to take any additional questions, but, uh. We want to get your support, thumbs up to advance these recommendations to TRIMET for inclusion into their Public Transportation Improvement Plan for the next biennium. See if there's any feedback or, or, uh, suggestions on making, uh, adjustments to that, and then, um. Open for any questions.
So before, uh, Commissioner Kai and I comment on this. I know you've seen this through the committee work already, but is there anything you want to add or make comment on?
Well, uh, two things, uh, one, uh, Anya, this is for you and Stephen for you. Diame did an excellent job, uh, I, I often felt that, uh, my, my job was just to keep the process moving, but I, I just wanted to commend you, you.
Thank you.
It's always nice to see our folks, uh, do the kind of great staff work that needs to be done, so that would be my first comment. My second comment is, I'm sure you got from Tom Mills from TRIMET, the same email I got in the last couple of days saying. What are you going to prove and we need to do that soon, so I suspect you're going to take this information and, and, uh, transmit it, uh, as soon as we get done, I, I presume, is that correct?
Yeah, as far as the, um, I think the email that we received was about those discretionary grants.
Discretionary grants.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll be, um, we can talk, talk more about those.
Okay, we can do that. That's all I had, though.
Great, Commissioner Frank.
Thank you Chair, um, Diame, great presentation and I, thumbs up for me. And great job on your engagement in the tabling, you had an impressive number of people that you're engaging, your tabling. So, good job, um, and congratulations. It's, it's always, I'm, I'm sure it's easier to talk to people about transit and public transportation. But it's also hard to reach people and be at these spaces, uh, the fact that you've made yourself available and. Made a conscious effort to reach people and engage them, I appreciate that, um, I'm a big supporter of public transportation and come from that side, so. And thanks for joining us this morning, we started early, but.
Thank you, I'm so sorry for being late, I'm really glad to be here this morning and Diame did a great job with the presentation.
Thank you for the, the comments, I just wanted to acknowledge Ride Connections' team and our team really did, you know, uh, yeoman's work out there, working, uh, and, and reaching our community members, so. All the credit goes to them.
Yeah, right, you have great signage, phone numbers and everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you all said on these three policy.
I'm, I'm all set.
Okay, yeah, um, so as always. Diame makes serving on the committees fun and interesting. And Ride Connection is an awesome organization and just a terrific partner. Really does a marvelous job of exploring possibilities and making sure that, um. Options and recommendations are highly cost-effective, not just cost-effective, but highly cost-effective. And meet the needs of potential customers and actual customers. Uh, so, um, the full board, even our two members who aren't here today, are away on business. Are very supportive of public transit, so, uh, and are really proud of this partnership. And the thorough work that the committee does in exploring opportunities and bringing recommendations. So I wholeheartedly approve these, thank you.
Great, thank.
Keep up the great work.
Appreciate this, appreciate the comments and the direction, and we will make sure these are advanced accordingly, and, and just in terms of what those next steps are. The TRIMET, uh, House Bullet. Twenty seventeen Advisory Committee with, which, uh, Commissioner Rogers and I, uh, sit on will take action on these recommendations at the November twenty-second meeting. Uh, as we noted, we'll bring back our, uh, updated transit development plan for your consideration on December third. And then the TRIMET Board will take action on that Public Transportation Permit Plan to advance to ODOT in December. And then the OTC will ultimately take action in early twenty twenty-five.
Great.
All right.
Onward ho we go.
Yeah, and then we just wanted to. Uh, highlight again, and I'll, I'll turn to John to kind of walk us through what the Bethany Link service will look like and.
Yeah, thank you, Diame, um, so really pleased to announce that, um, next week, October fourteenth, we will be launching the new Bethany Link Shuttle. Um, and this will provide the most direct transit connection from Sunset Transit Center to PCC Rock Creek with stops along the way. Um, in Bethany Village, uh, throughout Cedar Mill, Sunset High School. Uh, the, the Columbia Sportswear Campus and a number of other destinations. Um, we'll be able to run service Monday through Friday from five thirty AM, uh, to after ten PM in the evening, so a pretty good span of, of service. Uh, to meet what we feel to be most of the community needs, uh, with a frequency of about every forty-five minutes. So, uh, yes, we are preparing for, for the launch. Should be seeing, uh, an- announcements going out on, on social media. That'd be great if, i- i- if the county could share any announcements over the next several days. And, uh, we'll keep you all informed, uh, over how service goes.
No weekend service?
No weekend service at this point, um, certainly something that, um, could be considered in, in future bi- Certainly something that could be considered in, in future biennia as funding becomes available. And, and there are, you know, I think planning dollars outlined in the current plan to study modifications, adding weekend service or frequency or span in future biennia, but no plans as of this point.
Some organizations squeeze a dollar more than you have. Yeah, I, I would share the chair's comments. You've done a great job. My only complaint about all of this is that we need about double the dollars to do anything. So we're really fighting over crumbs just to make routes. So thank you for your spicing the crumbs into something that makes sense.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. And I think it really speaks to how beneficial the Washington County partnership has been for Rite Connection as well. We operated these shuttles prior to House Bill 2017 and the creation of the STIF program. And they were just in a much worse place. And sustainability was always, I think, questioned as we were operating those prior to 2019. So the fact that we have a reliable partnership in Washington County and even as funding fluctuates, it is, has been fairly stable and even grown over time. So that's allowed us to consistently provide the service to the community.
And I was just going to add, Commissioner, I know the topic of increasing state transportation improvement funds hot topic in terms of what might make it into a 2025 legislative package. That's a little bit contrary to the back to basics maintenance and operations focus that they have. But I think it's an important service. And I think there's a real acknowledgement that it's made a big difference across the entire state.
I would just ask that for this slide and for subsequent communications to prevent additional constituent outreach or incoming for Commissioner Treese and myself. It's not the whole Cedar Mill area. This is really just the Cedar Mill Town Center area or in general, the South Cedar Mill area. Because this does not go through the greater Cedar Mill area and in no way touches the extent where the line 50 ran, nor where the Cedar Mill shuttle ran. So that's where I think the Cedar Mill references need to be pretty precise. I mean, Bethany Village is pretty precise. There is no North Bethany Center at all. No commercial center, no town center, no village center, nothing like that. So by comparison, I think that is the only one that needs a little refinement so that we don't end up getting emails saying, you know, you say it's Cedar Mill, but it's not Cedar Mill. It is truly, it does go through the Cedar Mill Town Center area. So I'm fine with that. It'll just help.
Yeah, we'll make sure that communicates.
Yeah, because the Cedar Mill news will propagate the information. So let's just try and make sure it's as close to describing the line that is very extensive. So thank you. And it'll, it's really beneficial because with fixed route transit, for the most part, with the exception of access along Cornell Road, folks have to go to the Willow Creek Transit Center, which adds an extent of time. So this is for, for folks going east or south. This is a great progression, progression. So thank you as well as providing for circulation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. So Commissioners, we have a choice. We've, we've been at it for an hour versus an hour and a half. Would you like to take a break now or just press on with the next topic and then take a break?
Press on.
Okay, is staff ready to do that, Ms. Angie?
Yep.
All righty. Well, then we'll dive right into the proposed urban growth boundary expansion by the governor pursuant to Senate Bill Four. Welcome.
Well said. All right. Good morning, Chair Commissioners. Really excited to be able to present to you an update on the proposed urban growth boundary expansion by Governor Kotek. That's pursuant to the Senate Bill Four. We're going, we have a pretty tight agenda for you. A brief update. We'll give you a background on Senate Bill Four from 2023 and the current process. We'll talk about next steps if the executive order is signed really in relative to the county. And then the policy question for you is to, is to ask and to seek your support for proposed talking points from the county to discuss the governor's proposal. There is a public hearing, a public meeting, apologies, on Thursday evening. And so we'd like to get you this information as soon as possible. I think the, the, the work here really highlights the team's expertise and experience as well as their ability to stay engaged in relationship with our, with any stakeholders in this process, maintaining the county's priorities, but really exerting a really great ability to collaborate and work well with our colleagues across the state. Turn number two.
Good morning, Board. Erin Doyle, Senior Government Relations Manager for your county. This slide is just a reminder of the Senate Bill Four was a lot of things. But most importantly, it was a reaction for Oregon to support the work that our federal government did in expanding investment in the semiconductor and chips manufacturing industry here in the United States, where we're trying to enhance the manufacturing capacity within our internal borders, given the shortage of chips during times when it's hard to get goods from one country to another. This is, so Senate Bill Four was, became known as the Oregon's Chips Act and had a number of pieces to it. The one we're going to focus on today is obviously it provided temporary permission for the governor to expand the urban growth boundary if certain conditions were met related to creating land available for semiconductor and advanced manufacturing in the semiconductor space for those facilities, given that there is a noted shortage of large lots of industrial land across the state. So this permission was granted across the state, not just here in Washington County. That has been in place. It also has a sunset at the end of the year. And as a result of ongoing conversations and opportunities at the federal level, the governor has decided to invoke this authority. While the governor was permitted to pull multiple sites if necessary, she's decided to focus on 373 acres just outside of the current Hillsborough Urban Growth Boundary that meet the Senate Bill Four criteria according to the draft determination that accompanied the announcement that was announced in late September with updates, including this map. And that draft determination were provided on the Business Oregon website on October 3rd. There had been original conversations around a much more extensive acreage, but the governor decided that 373 acres would meet the needs to support a, an application that the state is putting forward to bring in some national dollars to create a national facility, either in packaging or in manufacturing. There's two, two of the three types of potential national centers of excellence essentially. And so in looking at what was possible and where the semiconductor industry within Oregon would really benefit the application most. It's obviously Washington County based on the investments that this region has made in enhancing, enticing and supporting that semiconductor and chips manufacturing industry, not just with the one obvious of Intel, but these other 54 businesses in Washington County that are engaged in this practice and the heavy concentration of folks who are educated and work through all of those suppliers that go up to that, to those manufacturing facilities. So it is contiguous to Hillsborough's existing urban growth boundary. It is within three miles of Hillsborough's existing urban growth boundary and is not within areas designated as acknowledged urban reserves or rural reserves under some laws that were passed that set Washington County's urban and rural reserves in 2012. But because I am not a planner and I don't do those things, I now turn it over to Erin to explain what that last section means.
Thank you. Erin Wardell, Assistant Director of Land Use and Transportation. So this slide talks a little bit about the history of urban and rural reserves in Washington County. And of course, this is a very abbreviated summary. You're all aware. There's a whole lot of history here that we're not going to go into today. But the important takeaway is that Washington County's urban and rural reserves were established by House Bill 4078 in 2014, colloquial known as the grand bargain. You sometimes hear it referred to that way. HB 4078 resolved years of legal battles over the designation of urban and rural reserves that had been adopted by Metro and the county in 2011. The proposed area for this Senate Bill Four authorized UGB expansion is designated on that slide with the orange star. It's 373 acres that had been designated as urban reserve by Metro in 2011. HB 4078 changed that designation to rural reserve at that time. So this was land that had been considered for urban reserve. It was then turned into rural reserve. And the governor is now proposing to bring it into the urban growth boundary. This slide outlines the proposed urban growth boundary expansion timeline as outlined by Senate Bill Four. And this reflects our best understanding as of today as how these things will happen. There could be some adjustments as we move forward throughout it. But on September 18th, the governor made the announcement that a public meeting would occur. That started our process timeline. On October 3rd, the state released a draft determination and the map of the land under consideration that also opened up the written comment period. On October 10th, the public meeting will be held in the city of Hillsborough in the Civic Center. The meeting will start with staff presentations from the state, county and city. They will then take public comment both through Zoom and in person in the room. At the conclusion of that public meeting, there will be a 20-day remainder of the public comment period. So on October 30th, the public comment period closes. Written comments can be submitted to the state up through 5 p.m. on that day and they can be submitted via email. So then, according to Senate Bill Four, prior to the end of the year, December 31st, the governor can make a determination of whether or not to expand the urban growth boundary. She has a lot of options here. She could choose to enact what had been proposed. She could choose to amend what had been proposed and do something different from that. She could also choose to do nothing and not use her authority to expand the urban growth boundary. According to Senate Bill Four, once that executive order happens, if it happens, there will be a six-month time period in which the county can make updates to our comprehensive plan and zoning. And then the city, we expect, would also make corresponding changes to their comprehensive planning. And I'm going to talk about that in a little bit more detail in two slides.
I have a question about the, the public comment, the 20-day period you mentioned. That starts by October 10th, as soon as the first.
Senate Bill Four is written to say that there must be a 20-day comment period after that public meeting happens. So the comment period has actually already started. They authorized it when they released the materials on October 3rd. So it will continue for 20 days after the meeting. Yep. So this slide talks a little bit more about that public meeting. And again, this is described in Senate Bill Four that there must be a public meeting between the state, city and county in advance of the executive order. The bill is largely silent and all the logistics of how that happens. And so we have been coordinating with the state and the city and how this meeting will take place. The meeting will be held in Hillsborough on Thursday evening from 6 to 9. It is a public comment opportunity. So people can submit written comment or they can show up on Zoom or in person in the room. In-person public comment will be taken. People can sign up in person the day of the meeting. And people can also register to provide their comments virtually. So we want to make sure this information is available to the public who's watching today. Now I want to talk a little bit more about the county responsibility. And again, we are learning every day about what our responsibility actually is. So there could be some changes to this as we go forward. Senate Bill Four specifically references actions by the county in which the UGB expansion takes place. It specifically says that the governing body of the county is authorized to designate the land as industrial and urban within six months. If that action is taken within six months of the executive order, the action is exempt from some state planning rules and the state planning goals, which means that we wouldn't have to make the usual findings that we make in accordance with the land use ordinance. It's just a little bit of a, an exemption path. And we're still understanding with our legal counsel what that means. And so we'll be continuing to coordinate with county council on what that ordinance would look like and what the findings would look like. But it's a, it's a pretty big incentive for us to take that action within six months if that's something the county is going to do.
Could I ask a clarifying question on that?
Yes.
So SB Four aside, there could be a hypothet, in both these cases, both hypothetical cases. Hypothetical number one, Metro does a UGB expansion. It's under the responsibility of a city. And so Metro extends the UGB. The city is responsible for all the concept and comprehensive planning. County plays a support role to the city for things like transportation. Is there any correction in terms of the county's role? Have I described the county's role properly or have I forgotten something?
That's absolutely correct. The county has a very passive role at a typical Metro UGB expansion.
Okay. Hypothetical, atypical, Metro, it's typical of the past, but not of the current. Metro expands the UGB for industrial use that is within the county UUA responsibility. So the county has responsibility for this industrial land as an urban unincorporated area, not in a city. So we have to go through all of the land use requirements, comprehensive planning. Have I described that?
What you just described is similar to how Senate Bill Four lays it out.
Okay.
So Senate Bill Four, it's really interesting how it's written.
In this.
This is very unusual. Yes.
Which is why I wanted to point it out because by our policy, by our strategic plan and by current Metro policy, even with Senate Bill Four UGB expansion, there is the expectation by policy that this area will be governed by the city. But because of the provision of SB Four, it's requiring us to do something. And I'm trying to make sure we're very careful so that we're not taking on what a city, in this case Hillsborough, really should be taking on. And that to the degree possible that we play our normal passive role while meeting the letter of the law of SB Four. Is that what you're striving to do in your description?
Yes. So
Okay.
The city of Hillsborough has already done preliminary concept comprehensive planning for this area. They actually have done it for a much larger area than what the governor is proposing now. So the city of Hillsborough is pretty far ahead in what they'd like to see develop in this area. But Senate Bill Four was written specifically to say the county must take this comprehensive planning action. And so what we intend to do is continue coordinating with the city so that whatever we adopt is based on the work that they've done so that we can still play our typical role and do what we're supposed to do, but not functionally do that comprehensive planning on the city's behalf. I also want to note that while it doesn't require the city to take action, we expect that the city will. We also know that the city, in order to provide services to any development that occurs in this area, will require annexation. So this land will go into the city before it begins to develop. Hillsborough does not provide extraterritorial urban services.
Yep. I just want to make sure that we're not taking on additional work. And from the beginning to the end, it's very clear, the long-term governance and The long-term governance, and that includes all development handling and whatnot, will be handled by the city.
Senate Bill four only requires us to read them.
Right, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I was just gonna add, Chair, I think, yeah, where the process we're looking at here is probably something in between the options one and two that you lined out earlier. We're not doing the full comprehensive planning work, but we're playing a little bit more than our typical sort of passive supportive role here. And so again, consistent with our adopted urban planning area agreement with Hillsborough, the expectation is the city will be annexing that area prior to any development occurring.
Yeah, I just, I I I have a little caveat in my brain in terms of the city going through comprehensive planning since the area is rural reserve right now. And so landowners or others may not have paid attention to whatever process. Some landowners, some individuals may not have paid attention and may now say, okay, well, when's the comprehensive planning? And I don't want us to become the target of that. That's all.
The governor's office did take the step of providing mailed notice to the property owner, the surrounding property owners that would be impacted by this decision under Senate Bill four. So that starts the process and is during that meeting. It is the plan right now for Stephen to present. The county has this specific role, and that's what we'll be doing. And then the city will then step up and say, here's a lot more work that we're going to be doing, talking about their work.
Great. Thank you.
And I just want to note the last point on this is that the board does have to authorize staff in order to file an ordinance. We do have a reference to Senate Bill four within our existing work program as a tier one task to do our typical urban growth boundary planning and urban planning area agreement updates with the cities. Since that reference is in there, we think that that authorizes us to do the work that we're already doing. We may want to come back to the board with a specific authorization for a bundle of plan amendments that we think we may need to make, just so that we're all clear about what we're going to do and what the board is comfortable with us doing. And we'll have more information about that at a later date.
Are we still in a position where the board adopts the L E T. work plan? Because I know we went to a system of every two years.
Two-year program. So Senate Bill four was adopted in twenty twenty-three. We did our work program in twenty twenty-three, so we knew to include the reference.
Yeah, I needed the reminder.
I I actually forgot that reference was in there. Somebody reminded me earlier this morning that we did include it, so we were ahead of ourselves.
I think it's a great idea that either subsequent the next Tuesday after the governor has entered an executive order would be a perfect Tuesday for us to take action to to authorize staff to file an ordinance. Either that or do it in anticipation, right?
Yeah, I I would almost suggest that we might just pre-authorize.
Wonderful.
So that, yeah, that's one less
Yep.
procedural step we'll have to worry about to meet our fairly aggressive six-month timeframe.
Yep. So after the certainly after the public meeting, but we might want to wait until the public period closes. Awesome.
Oh, we changed slides already. Good job, me. So in drafting as a team, we reviewed what your board has said since twenty twenty-three and the passage of the Federal Chips Act to craft these generalized talking points. These are here for your use to speak as one board about the decision that the the governor has made to start this public process. We wouldn't expect you to memorize these many words, but the the four points remain that we, as a county, recognize that we, as a community, have invested in the semiconductor and advanced manufacturing, research, and development space for decades and that we are proud of that work. That anything that is included in an expansion of an urban growth boundary that should rely on the work that has been done in this community and relying on those decisions in twenty eleven for future urban expansion through that public process that Metro and the county went through is a good grounding for the decision of where to expand the urban growth boundary. The third point being that infrastructure costs money and it's not our money that we would like to see invested in this. And that's not just the transportation facilities of Washington County, but the housing that we generally support. But the water and wastewater and clean water services works in particular. I have talked with Elizabeth about this to make sure that they felt seen in this comment. But those are important pieces of the industrial opportunities that are supposed to be pulled in. And we need the resources of the state to support that work, especially at the pace that they're expecting urbanization to occur on this land. And then finally, that we will continue to work in partnership with the state, the city, and the special districts that would serve any urban growth boundary expansion in a collaborative process that meets the needs of the community and supports the continued growth of this vital industry that is centered in Washington County. These are four points that we think fit with the direction your board consistently gives in the space of urbanization, but also recognizing the special opportunity that this is and that it is a once in a generation kind of investment from the feds and the state in this industry and in this county. We also A C A Ledesma and I spoke with Commissioners Therese and Willie before they left. Just so they had these talking points in hand as well. They were comfortable with them and making them their own as they talk with members in the community or if they are approached by anyone who has either concerns or support or just wanted to talk about it generally. But from here, we have two policy questions for the board's consideration. Just generally, did we hit the mark on those talking points as you make them your own? And secondly, how does the board want to be involved in the public meeting on October tenth? I will remind you that at your roundtable, we did have a very brief discussion. At that time, the chair indicated that she would like to speak for the county at that public meeting. We are assuming that is continuing to be the plan. We have informed the governor's office of that. During the run of show, elected officials will be given first first pass at testimony. So we have have put her name in already, but unless your board makes the change today. So with that, we turn it back to you, Chair, for any further conversation. And I will put the slide back on to the talking points in case people want to refer back.
Commissioners. Thumbs up for me on the talking points and the chair speaking. Yeah. I will be in the room.
As far as the second point first, we all agree that the chair is a natural to be speaking for us. In regard to the talking points, I have a couple of comments. They not may not have any value. I put that in front, but for consideration in the four bullets, we talk about county government, state government, special districts. The only directional comment is in the fourth one where we say Washington County. And since these are somewhat odd issues with other counties all wanting this, would it make any sense to say that they're centered in this immediate area instead of Washington County? Don't have to do that. Washington County may be a place that you want to say. I'm just trying to soften it so that others don't take exceptions. They was, you're all self-serving, but that's one. My bigger comment is, was there a reason that we didn't say that? And this is for those who say, we don't need any growth. You know, we got lots of issues. We got lots of people. The reason that all of this is even necessary is that there are no aggregated land holdings to put in any sizable investments in the area. And we all intuitively know that, because we talk about it around the table and other groups. But it's not in any of these points. So I I don't know whether we just dropped that because we said everybody knows that as a matter of fact. But I assume that people will be coming and listening to this from other parts of the state who may not at the top of their mind. So was there a reason that we're not reiterating that point again about we don't have any large aggregated properties that we can have these kinds of investments in?
I mean, in other places in of the state?
In your, in this area. That one, the Washington County I was saying around the state, but this other bullet in this immediate area, the Tri-County area, I'm not aware of anything of this consequence that would be able to.
So the reason why we, why I didn't push for that to be included is because that is part of the determination that the governor has to make. And I don't want to speak for the governor's determination. I'll let the governor speak for her assessment of the aggregated large lots. And that's why we didn't want to put it here. And we did want to focus specifically on what Washington County has brought to the table because that is where the land is being proposed and where the impacts to the community will be felt is here in Washington County. But is also standing on the work that has been done in this county for decades to grow these opportunities, not just in Hillsborough, but across Washington County, but specifically the number of businesses that feed into this industry within the greater Hillsborough area and within Washington County. We really wanted to focus on that to speak to the ongoing commitment this board has shown as you look at how to build a vital economic base for everyone.
So I could regurgitate that back, and I have one little tiny question. I understand the directional line in Washington County, that's fine. And I understand that would be simply reemphasizing my latter comment that it, that those are already in the conditions of the governor's.
Yes.
Necessary. And just out of my curiosity, so we dispense with that. Wasn't the land in the north part of the North Plains expansion area, which I find interesting? I thought that they were, they weren't coming across the freeway. I thought they were and picking up a little slice. Because I thought that's what Terry said the other day, but maybe not.
Yeah, the the North Plains.
Doing things. It's action.
They weren't coming down in here?
No, it was.
Up in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, the yellow, the yellow area on the map that's displayed right now was, would have been the area.
Is that the right area?
And also all the way down to touching the green area down at the interchange at Jackson School on Highway twenty-six.
This way.
Yeah, yeah.
There's two interchanges, right?
So the North Plains would have, would have sort of come right along and touched this area.
Yeah, they would have met at the interchange corners.
Would have touched it, yeah. Oh, okay.
But it's all within that undesigned.
Yeah, undesigned.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
And I will also point out that we did, in working with the governor's office in the city, make sure that we are able to do full levels of urban planning along the entire right-of-way of all of the binding streets on this. And that's why, if you look at the inset map, you see this long line. It's so that we pick up the full right-of-way of the roads so that we're not trying to do both an urban and rural road at the same time, which would not be effective.
Okay, for me, I am thumbs up on these four talking points as written as talking point. I think for the written material to reflect these talking points, they have just a couple of suggestions on the second item referencing the twenty eleven actions for future urban expansion using a regionally extensive and thorough public process. And also underneath that talking point in the written submission, I think it would be very useful to highlight in this written material that this was work that was enabled by and followed through on from the two thousand and seven legislation. There were two different bills, and the only one I can remember, and I'm hoping I remember the number right, is House Bill forty fifty-one. And I don't know if the second one was a House bill or a Senate bill, but there were two different bills. One that extended the U G B. decision by Metro out for a total of six years. And then the other was the bill that enabled the development of rules and factors for defining urban reserves in a manner that supports healthy urban areas as opposed to the soil classification hierarchy. Commissioner Fahey, you weren't an elected official then as Commissioner Rogers and I were. So the legislation passed in June of two thousand and seven. And from there, it took a year for the rules to be defined through a working group led by a L C D C commissioner and then adopted by L C D C. And then a whole year of work with information from the state Oregon Ag Department on the rural side, then within all of the communities within each of the three counties to have their visions and assessment. I'll just a whole big old committee of work from the second half of two thousand and eight through the end of two thousand and nine. So in February of twenty ten, Metro adopted the urban reserves and the county adopted by resolution the rural reserves because that Metro was responsible for defining the urban reserves and the three counties, the rural reserves. But we had to agree on the whole together. And from there, there were some additional requests and refinements. So we updated a Washington County set in May and June. Then it went, the whole package went to L C D C in October of twenty ten. They remanded it. And then in a joint Metro Council, Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting held right in our auditorium in February of twenty eleven, we came to agreement on some additional refinements that was sent on to L C D C. Then they affirmed that, then folks filed lawsuits via the Court of Appeals. And that's where Mayor Willie and the city of Hillsborough were very uncomfortable about one particular lawsuit. And they wanted to be able to get South Hillsborough brought into the U G B. And not wait for the Court of Appeals process to go through. So that's where Thousand Friends and City of Hillsborough went through negotiation and the state legislature under Brian Clem and Ben Unger's leadership as two state legislators took the action to the legislature in twenty fourteen, which references this House Bill forty seventy-eight. So that's how Washington County took land use back to the legislature and got ahead of the whole process. So that's where we are, which, so all these lands that the governor is looking at had gone through that extensive process were designated as urban reserve. And Hillsborough said, in order to get their U G B. expansion assured via the state legislature, they gave up a portion of the urban reserve area. So that's why I'm totally thumbs up on this proposal because it's it's land ripe for this purpose.
Thank you, Chair. And we'll take, yeah, we obviously weren't just going to use these four points for the any written materials. And also, your talking points will be a little bit more robust. We think you can get through more than this in three minutes.
Well, but I wanted to, you don't, I just want to make sure we recognize that the state enabled only our region to you go through this historic process for designating urban reserves. I think in the end, it was very prolonged, very arduous. I wore pads out on the wooden floors in my house. I wore hats out on the wooden floors in my house, uh, working through political issues and whatnot. But in the end, I think it was, it was very useful for our whole region. I don't know that it will test the stand, stand the test of time, but it has allowed us to move through on multiple UGB expansions without the level of vitriol and lawsuits that, uh, were commonplace with each cycle. And, uh, so I just want to make sure that the state legislature is recognized because they might want to consider enabling, uh, other areas in the state to go through similar processes.
The urban reserve process is available to other, uh, cities. The rural reserves process is not. But the process looks very different in other areas of the state. It's much less commonly used.
Yeah, I would expect it to be different. So, yeah, can't have one without the other. So, yep. And we spent a lot of, uh, Metro taxpayer dollars on the, the process and the public engagement. So, yep. Good job, staff. Onward ho we go.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We have just our public, uh, I mean, excuse me, our board and leadership communication. Are we okay with pressing on and not taking a break? Great. Alrighty. So let's do so. Board communication first.
Okay, I'll go next, Clerk Rogers.
You'll always have more.
I'll be quick, actually. I just, um, I've been reading a lot about preschool for all in the news and the value of county per county or statewide conversations and and obviously I have a preschooler this time, this, this time go around too. But, um, I had the opportunity to visit Community Action, their Head Start program. It was my first time seeing a Head Start program and really viewing the classrooms and, and the value and, and the community they serve. So it was really a good visit. Kudos and congratulations to Community Action and the work they do. Uh, they have five classes. And I didn't realize they also serve kids from zero to three and then zero to three and then three to five. I didn't realize for some reason I always associated Head Start being in preschool. So two to five. So that was a really good, good way to see of some of the good work that's happening in the community. And if, if the state were to transition to provide a preschool for all kids, that there will be a value for Head Start and Head Start will still be existing. So, um, so that's, that's the report I want to give. I think, um, uh, Head Start. Head Start, giving everyone a
Right.
A, a, a head start in the.
All right. All right. For me, um, see my calendar, the only interesting thing I think for this board is last night we had the audit committee meetings for both county and the Clean Water Service. Kathy did excellent, my report back, Kathy did an excellent job of presenting, uh, for Clean Water Services, the various components of the process. She also went on to indicate that she's forming an audit committee. That's nothing new to this board. You already aware of that? And, um, it became apparent to me after a couple of board committee members said, one, I, I don't know if I should be participating. I'm involved. I don't know what the capacity with clean water. And I thought I was just a audit committee member for the county, to which we all replied, well, there's no action. It was just an informational session. And another one said, well, our county commissioners also on the Board of Directors of Clean Water Services. So it's interesting, the level of, of, of understanding. Kathy also dealt with what we saw in regard to the component unit question. And explained that and the very cooperative arrangement. I, it's not really an arrangement, but the understanding was Greg Munn, uh, about taking this to GFOA and everybody understood that. And Greg was there and he did a good, what do you say about Greg? Always does a good job in terms of explaining what, uh, what the process is. It was just a kickoff. They're just explaining, here are the auditors. Here's what they're going to be looking at and here's how they're going to conduct their audit. So, uh, there might have one more before the end of the year. Uh, and that has to do with any findings from GFOA, but really the process, the next one will come in early of 2025. So whoever the representative is, I'll listen to actually what occurred on the audit and any findings. So that, that'll be 25. So anyway, that's, that's it for me.
Okay. Mine is somewhat short, though perhaps a little meaty. I've, um, been spending a fair amount of time on SHS reform. I shared the, based upon an email that, uh, the county chairs received from Metro President Peterson. I shared the draft H PAC proposal with the mayors late yesterday. And I'll make sure to send that same document to you today. Given the, uh, number of people that she has released the document to as well as briefed them on, I no longer consider it a document that we have to hold as a confidential document. The mayors had not received it previously. So even though her communication had said that the Metropolitan Mayor's Coalition Executive Team has been briefed, it was a very brief briefing. I guess would be the appropriate way to put it. So work continues there. In advance of the work session that we have next Tuesday, we have, as of this morning, received a memo from ACA Marnie Kyle. Also, please take a look back at the prior, um, presentation that we had in our, uh, public meetings from staff around, uh, I think it was August sixth, where they tried to identify if we had to deal with budget cuts of $5 million. Here's what it might mean to our community and our services. Similarly with $10 million. They did not include that in the memo. Um, they're relying upon you, uh, having that at hand. So, um, I continue to have planning around that, uh, and working with the three county chairs. Lastly, uh, well, no, before that, I went on a ride along with Waste Management out of Forest Grove last Friday. And much of what I saw in the ride along with, in our community, I was already familiar with having, having paid attention. You know, I was on a residential ride along. But, uh, it's one thing, I'm very familiar with the Waste Management CNG trucks through neighborhoods because of the urban unincorporated neighborhood adjacent to my little neighborhood. But it's another thing to be in the cab.
Did you drive?
No, heavens, no. I don't have the licensing nor the insurance coverage for that. Wouldn't want to. And, uh, it's quite a ballet. I am impressed with how skilled the drivers are at maneuvering in the multiple tight cul-de-sacs that we have in Washington County and the number of cans and the number of parked cars. It's seeing it in action from above is very impressive. So they pick up about, uh, 200 customers per day, uh, through their 10 hour day, each truck. Yep. Yep. Pretty extensive. Uh, so coming up, uh, we have the AOC-led committee and Board of Directors meeting next Monday. Leading up to that, of course, we have the steering committees. And, uh, in the Public Safety and Veteran Affairs Steering Committee, we now have a one pager, uh, that, uh, I'll make sure to get to all of you, which follows, uh, Senate Bill eleven forty five from 1995, created the partnership between the state and each county. With counties being responsible for individuals on probation, parole and post, post-prison supervision as well as individuals serving up to 12 months of incarceration. It all sounds very good and it is, uh, Community Corrections is a marvelous model for addressing the root causes of criminal behavior and helping individuals reintegrate with the community. The rub certainly has been around the costs. And, um, we talk about the actual cost studies, which are an average of all the counties in the state, which means we're one of the larger urban counties. So the average leaves us with a gap that relies upon our general fund to cover. Well, um, there continues to be a difference between the cost study and what the state actually funds. So, um, we're working together with our counterparts across the state and the Oregon Association of Community Corrections, um, directors to request that the state increase the funded level to $18.18 a day. Imagine living on $18.18 a day. So, um, a big improvement over where it was 14 bucks years ago. So they still have to, uh, provide a budget for that. So we'll see what happens. So, um, the state has also, um, had a work group for the medical examiners. And as we know, one or two budget cycles ago, the state, uh, two budget cycles ago, um, uh, pulled back on funding there. So I'm living budget now. I'm living proposed budget now. So here we go. That's it for me. Sorry I timed out.
Leadership Communication. Well, good morning, uh, Board of Commissioners. As you may have heard, the Secretary of State has identified an additional 302 records that may include non-citizens who were, who were registered to vote. The governor and the Secretary of State are both calling for an audit of the motor vehicle records. Washington County has been notified of an additional 57 records, which Dan Forster, our elections manager, audited this morning. We've completed our research on the 57, on the 57 records, um, from September seventh. Five of the individuals are eligible to vote. They have attested that they are citizens. Of the remaining 52 records, three have passed ballots in prior elections. So update on my schedule. I will be taking vacation, um, October 10th through the 14th. My mom and stepdad will be visiting, so spending time, um, with parents and, and family. On Tuesday, October 15th, I will be here for the majority of, um, the, uh, board meeting and work session. And I'll be leaving towards the end. Erin Calvert will be covering, um, that portion of the meeting for me. I'll be traveling to Manchester, England, uh, for ICMA, where I'll be attending Solus, which is an affiliate of ICMA serving the United Kingdom. I'll be participating on a panel focused on influencing inclusion in local communities. And just as a reminder and for the public record, the county does not pay for these costs of travel. Um, ICMA pays for these costs. And that concludes my update.
Thank you. Courtney.
Good morning, Chair Harrington, Commissioners. As you recall, we spent some time together in June in public meetings training. And we had talked at that time about the expanded, um, oversight authority for the Oregon Ethics Commission, Government Ethics Commission. When we, when we met, uh, we talked about how they hadn't finished their rulemaking, but that rulemaking is now complete. So I did review those rules. They look exactly as we expected. You know, with the new expanded authority and otherwise just sort of mirroring the existing public meetings law. But it was a good reminder as we move forward and I am preparing to do some public meetings training law with, uh, CCI in a couple of weeks. So I will go over that with them as well. Then not so much a legal update, but just sort of, sort of a slash personal work, uh, intersection. Excuse the pun, but I was, I commute home on the Farmington Road River Road, um, intersection, intersection project. And last night I used half of the new roundabout. So it was really exciting and fun. And so I'd reached out to the project manager, um, Rennis Kelf, uh, Kelfkins to say, oh, I'm so excited. You have the, um, new, uh, roundabout. And he said, he reported, yeah, that, and they're actually about to go into phase four and a little bit ahead of schedule. So shout out to, um, Stephen Roberts team and Russ Knobles team and the whole Capitol Project team. That's it for me.
On the, uh, updated government, government ethics, uh, rulemaking, is it worth in 2025 having a training with the board?
Yes, I think so, uh, Chair Harrington. Uh, one thing we do, I do need to follow up on is that, as you recall, one of the new rules is required training, annual training for, uh, public bodies with expenditures over $1 million, which certainly includes Washington County. The commission does now have webinars. I think you may have taken one. Did you take a public meeting?
Well, I was signed up to take one, um, but I learned after the fact that all of my Zoom meeting notifications, which is what they're relying on to send you the webinar Zoom logistics, for some reason go to my deleted box.
I know.
So I'm rescheduled.
Great. I get that feature.
I, I don't know how I got it. I haven't been able to undo it yet. Grace is still helping with that. Now I'm not deleting Zoom notifications that are in my deleted box.
Maybe there's some ones you wanted to leave in there. In any case, uh, yes, I think that would be a good use of your time and I can work with, uh, Ms. Angie and Kevin Moss, Clerk Moss, to see if we can get, um, that time scheduled for you. I was just going to say, as I recall, we can have, um, local training certified for that requirement, but I need to look further into that, make sure that we've checked all those boxes.
I know I mentioned email to my colleagues a week or two ago in, uh, Board Communications, but I'm not sure they all caught that the requirements have changed for us to each individually go through required. Hello, Elizabeth Edwards, CWS.
All right. Thank you so much, Chair and, uh, CWS Board of Directors. Just highlighting this week is finally upon us. It is the Water Environment Federation's Technical Exhibition and Conference, also known as WEFTEC. Thank you so much, uh, to the county for loaning us directors, uh, Teresa and Willie this week. They are traveling with, um, CWS CEO Diane Tanaguchi Dennis and other CWS leadership and staff. One thing that I wanted to highlight is at WEFTEC, we have what's called the Operations Challenge. And Clean Water Services has two teams competing in the Operations Challenge, which includes five rigorous events that test skills and knowledge of wastewater professionals. This is also sometimes known as the Wastewater Olympics. So they're competing today and tomorrow. Um, hope to report back the, uh, the final standings. So very proud of that. Tomorrow night we have, um, our first CWA meeting of their calendar year. We're going to do, um, we're going to touch on public meetings law. It won't be the full training. We'll have our general counsel provide the full training next year. We'll have our General Counsel provide the full training next year as approved by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. We'll also be talking about the process of negotiating IGAs with the counties. We will also have staff present at the SB four public meeting, but we will not be providing testimony, but we'll, we'll be in the audience there. So those are, those are my updates.
Could be a standing room only crowd. Yeah. Good news is Hillsborough has pretty comfortable chairs. Alrighty. Well, unless anyone has anything else, I think that's it for today's work session. All right, we're hereby adjourned.